Okay, and we're live.
Great, thank you. I would like to call the meeting to order of the San Mateo County Harbor Board of Commissioners on March 17th at 1:01 PM. Roll call, please, Melanie.
Mr. Jane Corrali.
Present.
Commissioner Ryrie.
Present.
Commissioner Matush.
Present.
Commissioner Zemke.
Present.
Commissioner Laranis. I did not hear Commissioner Laranis. Oh, wait a minute.
I saw him earlier.
I did, I just saw him. Lizzy, do you know what happened to Commissioner Laranis?
I don't, but I'll give him a call and troubleshoot.
Okay. Okay, well, we do have a call, but we can wait for a couple of minutes if everyone is okay with that, because I saw him on the.
Yeah, he was here.
Yeah, yeah. Happy to wait for a couple of minutes. John McManus, I don't believe we've met. Thank you for being here.
Pleasure. I hope you can hear me.
We can, thank you.
Thanks for having us.
I see you have your shoes on the wall again.
They live there.
Any luck, Melanie or Lizzy?
I just sent him the link, so he should be accessing it soon.
Okay, thank you.
And Lizzy, is it possible that you can let Chris Del Sid in on the meeting because he's, we're going to introduce him as a new employee?
Of course.
You know what, I'm just going to start the meeting. It's 1:03, and I know that Ed will get on when he gets on. So why don't we move to the second agenda item, which is new employee introductions? I don't know, Jim, John, or Jim Merlow, I think, is here too. I know that Chris Del Sid is a new employee, so take it away. Jim?
Yeah, if I can ask Julie to, oh, it looks like Julie got dropped off, but we recently solicited and got several responses for a position for Oyster Point, and Chris did excellently interviews and was our top choice, and he accepted our offer. So Chris, if you can introduce yourself and tell the public what you do for the district.
Sure, so my name is Chris Del Sid. Happy to meet all of you. I am the new accounting technician for Oyster Point. I'm pretty much the face of the marina. I interact with slipholders and the public on a constant basis, as well as act in the harbor district's best interests in making sure we, you know, provide services and get compensated for our services. I've worked as a temp with the harbor district for a brief period in 2018 and 2019, and then I came back again as a temp in July. And then I applied for the position when it opened up, and I'm happy to be here full-time on board. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much. I received my bachelor's a while ago, like in 2010 in psychology, but after that, I shifted to an accounting degree, and I've been working mostly and then taking courses slowly part-time. And I'm finally getting my associates in June, and then I'll be further pursuing additional accounting education as well.
Well, welcome aboard, Chris. There's a lot going on at Oyster Point, so I'm sure you're going to keep everyone on their toes.
Please doing my best, and yes, there's definitely a lot going on.
Yes, well, thank you, and welcome aboard. Any other commissioners want to comment on Chris's new position?
No, I'll just echo that and say thanks, and welcome aboard.
Look forward to meeting you in person.
Same here, Chris, welcome.
Thank you, and likewise as well.
Great, well, we're going to move on to the agenda, the item C, which is public comments. This section is for the public to make a comment on items that are not on the agenda. I know that there are probably people from the public who are here who are interested in a certain item that we're going to be discussing today on the Bay Delta Plan. And if you are interested in making a comment when we get to that item, that's the appropriate time. So this particular public comment period is for, you know, the public to have a chance to make comments on items that are not on the agenda. And right now, I see one hand from Allison M. Allison, thank you, you have two minutes.
Hi, good morning. I just wanted to join quickly to just relay some information back. It's not a big item. I just wanted to put it on the radar of people that are listening to the public comments into this meeting. And first of all, I wanted to say I want to state an expression of solidarity with the women in Georgia. You know, that were just recently targeted, and I'd like to, you know, just to address the wave of anti-Asian violence and say that I I just have so much solidarity, you know, with our Asian-American citizens, with Asian nationals visiting America, everything. And obviously, Asian Lives Matter, and I just think it's important that we talk about it and express solidarity. I've just been so moved by it, as you can probably tell. But the item of information that I wanted to report back is that I quite often go to the State Lands Commission, and now it's by Zoom, and the Lieutenant Governor is a part of that body. And I spoke in public comments last time about Dock Town and about fixing something that is a mistake in law. It has to do with independent ports, and it's very important. I'll speak in more detail on that later at another meeting. But I did want to say that another person from this locality, Sabrina Brennan, did speak in public comments, and it's available on CalSPAN, and it has to do with the Mavericks video competition and making an assertion that the State Lands Commission should assert jurisdiction over that, whether that's by a lease or a permit, and I think she said a lease, and I think, you know, I'm not sure that the State Lands Commission actually requires a permit for all activity that's done on State Lands. In fact, I know it doesn't. But I just wanted to put that on the radar, and it would be available. Typically, State Lands Commission takes public comments at the end of very long meetings. And recently, they've started taking them at the beginning, so it's at the beginning of the last meeting. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And so now we will go to the consent calendar, item D. Does anyone like to pull any, would anyone like to pull anything off of the consent? If not, if there's, is there?
Commissioner Corrali, I think that Bob and Sherry Ingles have their hands.
Sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry, Bob and Sherry, I didn't see your hand, and that, and yes, public comment. I'm keeping public comment open for Bob and Sherry Ingles.
Yeah, this is Sherry. Thank you very much for giving us a moment here. Just a real quick update, it's very possible Commissioner Matush might have relayed it to you already, but the upcoming fishing seasons, and also Mr. McManus more than likely can shed a whole lot more light than I can. At a half moon bay, the rock fishing season will open as scheduled on April 1st. And this year, there is 10 more fathoms that is available for the first time in about 15 years. So we anticipate a great rock fishing season, if all goes as planned. The salmon season, though, major hurdles taking place. The salmon season was scheduled to open April 3rd. At this time, it will open April 3rd south of Pigeon Point. Pigeon Point is about 18 miles south of our harbor, which means it's in range for boats that want to travel that far. Anything in the harbor or north of the harbor, though, is going to be closed and still has to be determined at the next PFMC meeting, the fence. Right now, it's looking like it will not open anytime sooner than like June 24th to July 1st. But again, that's still up in the air, and we'll just have to wait to see how it's going to go, so. Yeah, we do look, we do think that the rock fishing will be a major shot in the arm for our area, and we keep our fingers crossed that it'll go as planned. And that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised, Melanie. So I'm going to close public comment at this time and move back to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Melanie.
Mr. Ryrie.
Aye.
Commissioner Matush.
Aye.
Mr. Zemke.
Aye.
Commissioner Laranis.
Aye.
And I, and I'm an aye also, Melanie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Jane Corrali, I'm sorry.
That's okay, aye. So that motion carries. And now we will go to the discussion section of our agenda, and I know that we have a couple of guests here today to do a presentation on item number 12, which is the Water Quality Ad-Hoc Committee update. And so I would like to move that item to be the first item under the discussion section. So I know that Commissioners Ryrie and Matush are on this committee, so, and I think Commissioner Ryrie chairs the committee. So Commissioner Ryrie, would you just like to give us a brief update on what happened at your ad hoc committee meeting and what we're going to be looking at today?
Yes. Yes, I would. So Peter Druckmeyer, who is the director, is the, Peter, I'm going to get this wrong again. Pardon me?
Policy Director.
Policy Director of the Twalome River Trust. And John McManus approached the board with a concern that we may have an interest in adopting a resolution to support the Bay Delta Plan. And so at our ad hoc committee meeting, Peter made a presentation that the rest of the board will be able to see today. And it was very clear that this was a very small step we can take to support our commercial fishing industry. And failure to implement the Bay Delta Plan would likely lead to the extinction of salmon in California Central Valley, which would cause a dire impact to the commercial and recreational fishing industries in San Mateo County. So I'd like to introduce Peter Druckmeyer and John McManus, who will be making presentation for us today.
Really, thank you so much, Nancy, and thank you all for taking up this issue and giving us a chance to present today. Again, I'm Peter Druckmeyer, the Policy Director for the Twalome River Trust, and I am going to share my screen. Is that working for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so one thing's that's undeniable is that the San Francisco Bay Delta is in a state of ecological crisis. Everyone agrees with that. There are differences in what needs to happen. But for many decades, the ecosystem's been in decline. And the State Water, State Water Quality Control Board is the agency that's responsible for water quality in the Bay Delta. And the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan was required by the Clean Water Act. It was first adopted in 1978. It was updated in 1995, but hasn't been updated since. So we're in the midst of a 10-year process right now to update the plan. A little bit about the Delta, it's the largest estuary on the west coast of the Americas where freshwater and saltwater mix. It, 50% of the water that falls in California, and snow as well, drains out through the Delta from the Sacramento River to the north and the San Joaquin River to the south. It's an incredible habitat that provides habitat for 500 species of fish and wildlife. It's a major stopover for the Pacific Flyway, and it's the migration corridor for salmon and steelhead and other anatomous fish that start their lives in freshwater, then live out in the ocean for a while, and then come back to the freshwater to spawn. And ecosystems changed a lot with the gold rush and people from all over the world moving to California. A lot of the Delta was converted to farmland, so levees were built, and areas that used to be floodplains, which is very good habitat, are now farmland. And then upstream, a lot of water is diverted for agriculture and urban uses. So it's been a heavily impacted ecosystem. So a little bit about flows. The science tells us flows are the most important thing for fish, believe it or not. Some people think that fish don't need a lot of water, but they do. So temperature is a big part of this. The native species like salmon have evolved in these fast-moving cold Sierra streams. And this photo is from the Klamath River in 2002, when a lot of water was diverted during spawning season, and the river heated up, and 70,000 salmon died before they could spawn. So this is an example of what can really go wrong. And fish need water to get up to their spawning grounds, and even more importantly, to flesh out the baby salmon in the springtime. And with faster flows, the water's murkier, it gets the fish out faster, and we've seen much better survival rates. Floodplains, as I mentioned, are really important habitat. These are areas where the baby fish can live, and there's more food there. There's protection from the invasive predators like bass that are in the main channel. And so these baby fish that have access to the floodplains are able to grow bigger, and when it's time for them to outmigrate, they have a much better chance of surviving. So we've altered the ecosystem a lot from a fast-moving cold river to a slow-moving warm stream. And non-native species that have evolved under those conditions are really thriving. This is water hyacinth from South America during the recent drought, and we just had miles and miles of mats of this invasive species, which can double its biomass in a couple of weeks. And what you don't see underneath that is bass, which are non-native. So these non-natives are a real problem, but more importantly, they're symptomatic of the problem that we've really altered the ecosystem to favor non-natives over natives. And then downstream in the Delta, we've had these toxic algae blooms, which are cyanobacteria that creates neurotoxins that can make pets and wildlife sick or kill them and harm people as well. So this is another condition from the low warm flows. And in the bay, we have a big change to the salt balance. More and more salt is moving up into the Delta. Some even reaches the Delta pumps and ends up on farmland or in municipal water supplies. And this change has affected the phytoplankton that are at the base of the food web, and that impact has trickled all the way up the food web. You know, a number of species have been in decline. We've heard a lot about the Delta smelt over the years, a very small fish that used to be the most abundant. This year, they didn't find any in the wild. And you can see a number of species are suffering the same impacts. Six species of fish are threatened or endangered in the Delta. So to the Twalome River, which is the source of our Hetchetchee water, the big problem there is that only 21% of the river's unimpaired flow, what would come down the river in the absence of dams and diversions, now makes it to the San Joaquin River. So people take out four out of five gallons, primarily for agriculture, but also a lot of that for urban uses. And here we see the impact of that. The state has a salmon doubling goal, so taking the average from 1967 to 1991 and setting a goal of doubling the number of fish. Some rivers have been doing better than others, but the Twalome is the worst off. Historically, there were well over 100,000 salmon spawning in the Twalome. This year, we had 1,000. We're less than 1% of the historic run. And you see the other two rivers in that red box are the Stanislas and the Merced. Along with the Twalome, those are the three main tributaries to the San Joaquin. So the San Joaquin River Basin has been hit really hard. The other rivers in the Sacramento Basin have done better. There's a direct correlation between flows and the health of salmon. When we have high flows, there are a lot more juvenile fish that make it out to the ocean where there's a lot of food. They get big. Two and a half years later, they come back to spawn. That's called escapement, those purple figures there. And so this is adjusted by two and a half years, so we're matching up the year of flows when the babies are out migrating to the success of them coming back as adults, and you can see a very direct correlation. So commercial salmon fishing, as you know, is an important part of the economy. We have Fisherman's Wharf, we've got Pillar Point. And where we used to have 10,000 commercial fishing permits, we're down to 2,000, so we've seen their decline for a while. And in 2008 and 2009, there were so few fish that the commercial salmon fishing season had to be canceled for the first time. And you might have read last week that it's very likely that this year, the season will be curtailed. So back to the Bay Delta Plan, it's divided into phases. And Phase 1 looked at the San Joaquin Basin, which again, has been very heavily impacted. And after several years of hearings and public comments, everyone weighing in, in December of 2018, the State Water Board adopted higher flows for the San Joaquin and its tributaries. And the way it works is based on a percentage of unimpaired flow. So between February and June, 40% of what would come down the river if there weren't dams and diversions has to stay in the river. So people would still be able to take three out of five gallons, but on the Twalome, this would essentially double the flows in those months. There are a couple of irrigation districts that get water from the Twalome, Modesto and Turlock. We didn't expect them to support this plan, but we were hopeful that San Francisco, being a liberal, very environmentally progressive city, would support the plan, as well as Basca. Basca is the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, which represents customers of Hetchetchee water that are not in San Francisco. So in San Mateo County, and then the northern part of Santa Clara County and the southern part of Alameda County. So there were these lawsuits filed immediately that put implementation of the Bay Delta Plan on hold, and that's where we are right now. So the reason San Francisco's involved is that the Hetchetchee Reservoir, which is in Yosemite National Park, is on the Twalome River. And the river flows west. You can see another large reservoir there called Don Pedro, and that's primarily for agriculture. And then the orange area in the Bay Area are the areas that are served by San Francisco. There's the city itself, and then 26 other customers. So at the height of the recent drought, San Francisco still had three years' worth of water in storage. A very enviable position. And what you see here is Hetchetchee on the bottom, which remained pretty full. And then there's Cherry and Eleanor, which are two other reservoirs owned by San Francisco, and then something called the Water Bank on the top. And the way that works is when San Francisco has its reservoirs full, but is entitled to more water, they can bank it in Don Pedro, which is owned by the irrigation districts. And then at other times of year or during droughts, they can capture water at Hetchetchee for use in the Bay Area, and they subtract an equal amount from the water bank. So they've invested a lot in storage in order to get through a long, long drought. And in an average water year, they're entitled to three times as much water as they need, so that's not a problem. But if you have a series of dry years, then the storage goes down. And on the right here, you see that the water bank rebounded quite quickly coming into 2016, which was an average water year. 2017 was a really wet year, and everything filled up really quickly. They had to release the maximum amount of water into the Twalome to prevent flooding downstream from early January into the summer. So that was a problem that we starved the river for five years, and then we had to dump all this water that was being held behind the dams. One reason we're really well off is we've gotten great at conserving water. In a 10-year period, we reduced our water use by 30%, and it hasn't rebounded back to where it was. It's still very low, under 200 million gallons per day. At the height back in 1987, it was 293 million gallons per day. So despite population growth, we're using less water now than we have before. And in two recent years, we use less water than in 1977, which was the driest year on record. And more good news is that San Francisco is projecting that for the next 10 years, water demand is going to remain flat. And one of the reasons is the price of water has gone up a lot, so it sends a signal to consumers that they should really use water efficiently, and we're seeing people converting from thirsty lawns to drought-tolerant landscaping, taking advantage of rebates for high-efficiency toilets and washing machines. And so once again, we're looking really good moving forward. And what we can show is that if the drought of record, the worst drought, which was 87 to 92, six years, if it were to repeat with the Bay Delta Plan flows in place, we could manage it without requiring any rationing or without bringing any new water supplies, like recycled water online. If we want to plan for a longer drought, then we would certainly impose rationing, and we would develop new water supplies. But the SFPUC has a different narrative. They're planning for something they call the design drought, which is eight and a half years. They combine the two worst droughts of the last century, 87 to 92, with 76, 77, the driest two years. And they're planning for demand to increase by 25%. And they're actually even using that projected demand, which is artificial, as current demand, so we're on top of them about that. So there's a lot of shenanigans going on, and we're hoping to clear up a lot of this next week. There's going to be a workshop at the SFPUC, and we're well-prepared to focus on water supply and demand. So again, San Francisco, you know, very environmentally progressive city. The, one of the main reasons why people conserved a lot of water during the recent drought was to benefit the environment. And unfortunately, all that water we conserved did not benefit the environment. And when I tell people that, they're outraged because that was their primary driver. Instead, the SFPUC and the irrigation districts only released the minimum amount of water that was required under the current standards, and everything else was captured behind the reservoirs, and as I mentioned earlier, in 2017, it all had to be dumped. And this is the problem between, for five years between 2012 and 2016, unimpaired flow averaged only 12%. Hardly a river. And then in 2017, the big water year, they had to dump all that water, so it was 79%. So what the Bay Delta Plan would do is it would even things out, so it would be 40% each year at least. And in a big water year, that's more water, and a small water year is less water, but it would be consistently 40%. So thank you so much for taking up this issue. We hope we'll get your votes in support of the Bay Delta Plan. Things are moving in a positive direction for us. There are some new commissioners in San Francisco who are pretty good, and they really want to get to the bottom of these issues, and we're engaging with the mayor. But we need more public support, and as agencies see that other agencies are supporting this for very good reasons, like protecting the salmon economy in San Mateo County, that really helps us out. And with me today is John McManus, who's the Director of the Golden State Salmon Association, and I wanted to invite him to add anything that I might have missed.
Thank you, Peter. Actually, I don't think you missed much. That was pretty comprehensive. But there's a couple of things that I would just like to circle back on. I hope that this group adopts the resolution in front of you today, because salmon is so important throughout San Mateo County, and certainly to both Pillar Point and Oyster Point. I don't think I have to tell this group how important both the commercial and the recreational salmon fishery is, especially in Pillar Point. And you're probably aware that there are plenty of recreational salmon fishermen who launch out of Oyster Point, too, believe it or not, to run all the way out to Golden Gate Bridge. You've got millions of dollars coming across the dock annually in, in a normal year. You heard from Sherry Ingalls' report that we have a bad season coming up. We're looking at about a 40% loss on the recreational side. Probably at least a 50% loss on the commercial side. And I think probably everybody in this panel knows that on the commercial side, we're following a very poor Dungeness crab year. So a lot of the reason that we're in this pickle right now is because this Bay Delta Water Quality Plan has not been updated for 25 years. That's what's gotten us here. Put differently, if the state had updated the Water Quality Control Plan and just added just a little bit more water in these rivers, we're not talking about wholesale rejiggering. We're talking about a minor balance. Had they done their job and done that, we probably wouldn't be in this spot today. I also want to point to the Coastside Net Pen, which is in Pillar Point Harbor. And thank you all for your work and supporting that. That's incredible. It went a long way towards helping us get through last year's season in terms of the overall survival of those fish out into the ocean. But again, just consider this. The reason we've got that net pen there, I should say the Coastside Fishing Club, and thanks to them as well, is again, because juvenile salmon trying to get out of the Central Valley are having one heck of a time. They just don't have enough water. We move these same fish down in Net Penham and Pillar Point Harbor, they're surviving at about 400 to 500% higher than their natural cousins, struggling to get out of the Central Valley. So the resolution today asks that the Water Quality Control Plan be actually developed by the State Water Board and then implemented. And it'll greatly help the salmon resources throughout California. So I'll stop there and thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter, and thank you, John. So I'm going to open this up to Commissioner comments first, but let me just make one clarifying comment, John, in response to what you said and to Peter. And correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Wiering, this is just from what I read in the staff report. Our motion and our resolution today is to provide a letter of support for the Bay Delta Plan. We're not implementing this. We have no authority to implement this. So I just want to make it clear to the commissioners what we're going to be voting on and to the public as to what we're going to be voting on and, you know, so that they can adjust their public comments accordingly. So this is again, a letter of support. So I'd like to open this up to Commissioner comments before I open up public comment.
Okay, I guess I can start off. Thanks, Peter and John, for a very excellent presentation. Kind of a technical question I have. The in-stream flow requirements for hydroelectric projects are typically set by the FERC license. I think San Francisco may be exempt from that by virtue of the fact that the Hetch Echee project is authorized under the Raker Act. But just for my, what about the downstream licenses, FERC licenses, and where are they at as far as renewal?
Bill, you know a lot about these issues.
Well, I worked for PG&E for a long time. I was, the last 20 years of my career, I worked in hydrolicensing. So that's, that's the point of the comment.
You're correct that San Francisco does not need a license for Hetch Echee. But the big dam downstream, Don Pedro, was licensed in 1966. And it was a 50-year license. So that was expected to be renewed in 2016. So we've been really engaged in that as well. And in that process, a smaller dam, they have a diversion dam called La Grange, now requires a license. This is the oldest dam on the Tuolumne, 1893, and it didn't require a license before, but now it does. So that slowed down the process a little bit. They needed to catch up on La Grange. And this last summer, they issued a final environmental impact statement for the two projects. And since then, the State Water Board has issued a water quality certification, which will be part of that license, which is based largely on the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan. So that's a positive. The irrigation districts in San Francisco are challenging that water quality certification. They actually went to FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and said, we think you should waive the state's authority to issue this water quality certification. And FERC said, no, they can do that. So so we're getting a little, picking up little victories here and there, but everything takes longer because there's opposition from the water agencies. And San Francisco is right there with the irrigation districts. They actually have a contract from 1995 that they will follow the irrigation district's lead on fish flows. So they've given up their ability to, to think and advocate for a position that would make a lot more sense for the city.
Okay. Thanks. I guess to the city, looking back at your numbers, I assume the cities run through their models on what the 40% unimpaired flow would do to their storage. Do you have any idea of what that results in the use of their stores? And the reason I ask it is, I mean, in San Mateo County, we virtually all take advantage of the water that comes from the Hetch Echee project. And I'm just curious of how that might affect the city's ability to have carryover storage.
So yeah, they have a model and it's based on the eight and a half year design drought. And then from that, they calculate firm yield for each year. So then, you know, any rationing that might be required in years six through eight and a half, then gets shifted in and blended in with the first five years. So they will say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to have to do severe rationing to make it through the design drought. They also use the number 265 million gallons per day as current demand, when actually current demand is 198, 25% lower. So they're going to get in some trouble with that because these water agencies have to update their urban water management plans and they're going to have faulty information. So we're hoping to get the commission to address that next week. So, yeah, what they do with, with this design drought is it totally inflates the potential impacts. And they'll say things like, you know, 45, 50% rationing at the first sign of drought, which is not the case. And where, what we point out is that we've done a probability analysis that the likely, that in the last 1,100 years, looking at tree ring data, there are only a handful of times we got to year six of the design drought. And we never got to year seven. And then they'll bring up climate change and we have responses to that, too, because you can put that into this model and see that you know, the likelihood of having this design drought is, you know, anywhere from 1 in 5,000 to 1 in 50,000. So there's debates about that. There are ways that climate change will actually benefit their water entitlements. And we can show that they might even pick up a year's worth of water at the expense of the irrigation districts who have the senior water rights. But a lot of this is going to come up on March 26th at the Water Supply and Demand Workshop that you might want to check out. We'll have a panel, they'll have a panel. And we're going to hash through some of these issues and see what we can agree on and where there are differences.
Great, thank you. I, I do support this. I, I do. I think it's the right thing to do, looking at the constituents and their interests and the interests of the district and supporting the beneficial use of, to aquatic life. So I do appreciate the, the update and good luck on your meeting with the San Francisco PUD.
I'll add one thing that what's very, very likely to happen is if this is implemented, San Francisco will partner with the irrigation districts to use irrigation water more efficiently, because that's the low hanging fruit. Farmers only pay $20 an acre foot. We pay 2,000. So we can, we can help them become more efficient and then share in the savings much more cheaply than bringing new water online in the Bay Area. Makes a lot of sense.
Economics does help drive efficiency. So, but thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Zimki. Commissioner Matush, I see that you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I just want to point out for members of the public that can't see all the public comments that came in. We had a large number of public comments that came in to support the Harvard District proceeding with this. And a slight point of information, this is not a letter of support. This is a resolution where we're going to hopefully support. And basically, commercial, recreational fishermen, bait and tackle stores, restaurant and tourism, the general public buying fish direct, all operate far better at both harbors when we have salmon. So I, for one, am totally in favor of this resolution and I'll be supporting it.
Commissioner Wiering? You're on mute, Commissioner Wiering?
Yep. I'm in support of this resolution as well. It's a very small step we can take to support our commercial fishing industry. Everyone agrees that the Bay Delta is in a state of crisis. And conservation and fishing groups say that flow is the critical factor. There's a direct correlation between water flows and the very existence of salmon. The statistic about salmon populations that used to be 100,000 and now are just 1,000 is just staggering. Yeah, I believe that we have an economic and I would argue a moral interest in supporting the Bay Delta Plan by this resolution. And this is, this is a very rare opportunity to lend support to help revive the Bay Delta.
Commissioner Larenas?
I have a couple of questions. And first, just let me say thank you to both of you. I absolutely support the work that you do. My question is, you've focused on salmon, which of course is the big issue, but there's also the greater ecology of San Francisco Bay. Could you say a little bit about the impacts, the positive impacts that are going to happen if, if you can have your way?
John, you want to take that one?
Yeah, yeah. One of the big things, it's not impacting us directly. I'm a resident of San Mateo County. But for those people living out in the Delta, every summer now, they're being subjected to outbreaks of toxic blue-green algae. Peter had a slide in his presentation about that, and it's really become a big problem. And that's all about a lack of flow to get through the Delta and blow that stuff out. In addition, we have issues with where the salt freshwater boundary is. And through the course of the year, that varies. I mean, in the winter and the early spring of 2017 with that heavy water year, we probably had freshwater all the way down to Raccoon Straits and, you know, near Angel Island. In drought, we'll see the salt intrude all the way up to Antioch and Pittsburgh. And where that boundary is matters. In fact, it's probably one of the reasons we've lost Delta smelt. Historically, that boundary was much further west. That made a huge difference to their existence and survival. I can refer you to the San Francisco Bay Institute, which put out a paper looking at the exact question that you described. And they talk about food chain effects out into San Francisco Bay. Also, Dr. Bill Bennett, formerly of UC Davis, is doing a study right now correlating Delta outflow with krill blooms all the way out to the Fairlawn Islands. And I'm really looking forward to seeing what he comes up. But so far, he's got some anecdotal stuff that looks very promising. Really wet years, you see big explosions of chlorophyll and krill in the Gulf of the Fairlons. Really dry years, you don't. So that's a couple of things I can share with you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Ed, I'll just add that you're absolutely right. We kind of use salmon as a shortcut, but it's really a salmon-based ecosystem and other species-based ecosystem. But with salmon, they bring tremendous amounts of nutrients from the ocean into the upland habitats where they fuel the food web and they fertilize forests and meadows and even agricultural lands. And that conveyor belt of nutrients is so critical to those ecosystems. So I often refer to the salmon-based ecosystem.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have another question, Commissioner Larenas? I thought you said you had a couple.
No, they answered them while they were. Appreciate it.
Okay, okay, thanks. So I just wanted to make, make a quick comment and kind of add on to what Tom said about the extraordinary public input and comments that we received via email. And all of these emails are online. I think, well, one may not be yet because it just came in. And these are from members of the public from all over the county, from the north down to, you know, Portola Valley and some into Santa Clara County as well. I think we received 15 letters. But one that I do want to read out loud is from this Half Moon Bay Seafood Marketing Association, which has been a great partner in this. And they were brought in, well, they, they, they actually wrote the letter after looking at our agenda. And I guess they weren't necessarily brought in, but they've always been, been part of the commercial fishing industry in San Mateo County because they're one of the main advocacy groups for our commercial fishing industry. So if you would just indulge me, I'd like to read this letter. I think it says a lot, and I think it's very relevant because this looks at the nexus between economic development and environmental protection and quite frankly, looks at sustainable seafood as well. So it says, "To the San Mateo County Harbor District Commissioners Regarding the Bay Delta Water Plan." "The Half Moon Bay Seafood Marketing Association is writing in support of the proposed San Mateo County Harbor District Resolution Number 21-05 to support the State Water Resource Control Board's update of the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan. Salmon was a top earnings species in Pillar Point Harbor and represented over $38 million in landings the 10 years before 2008, when the fishery experienced regulatory closures. From 2010 to 2019, total landings in Pillar Point Harbor were less than $15 million. This is a significant economic loss to our commercial fishing fleet and the shoreside businesses that support them and to our port community. Salmon has been an important part of our local commercial fishing heritage and a key economic driver for more than 100 years. If the continued loss of salmon seasons isn't turned around, we will see more losses of commercial fishing businesses in our port and others. This is devastating to the commercial fishing fleet and the many local families and businesses that the fleet supports. Commercial fishing is variable and challenging by nature. These are things that our commercial fishing fleet understands and accepts. However, it is difficult to accept such losses if fishing opportunities that could be avoided if it wasn't for lawsuits and politics. Fishermen are supportive of the Bay Delta Plan moving forward and appreciative that the San Mateo County Harbor District recognizes the importance of this issue. Thank you, Half Moon Bay Seafood Marketing Association. And this will also be online. So all of these public comments are available, should anyone want to read them. And so I will open this up to public comment from members of the public who are listening in and did not have a chance to write anything. And I see one hand, Carol Steinfeld. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Yeah, I'm Carol Steinfeld. I'm co-chair of the Water Committee of Sierra Clubs. Loma created a chapter, that's your local chapter, and we invited you to join us, by the way. We hope you'll approve this resolution. It lets SFPUC and Basca know that they're under-publicized protest scene. Because it's important, we live in right relationship to watersheds. And SFPUC and Basca need to adopt state-of-the-art best water management practices. We're behind in this county, especially compared to our neighboring counties. And this resolution would help hold them accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Rockwell. Mark, I've sent you a request to unmute.
Sorry. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm the President of the Northern California Council Fly Fishers International. And I represent 14 fishing clubs in the San Francisco Bay Area and more than 7,000 members. We want you to know that we fully support the resolution that you are putting, hopefully putting forward to support the Bay Delta Plan update done by the State Water Board. This plan and process that the State Water Board has approved can improve water quality in the San Joaquin River, the Bay Delta, as well as San Francisco Bay, all of which we've talked about today. And of great importance is that it will help salmon survive at greater numbers to spawn and for their offspring to reach San Francisco Bay and the ocean that it needs to become adults. This is key to salmon survival and for the fishing community, both recreational and commercial. This is a very important step that you are taking and I know Commissioner Wiering, I think it is, said it is a small step, but it's many small steps that come together to make a difference. So we really appreciate this and support your effort with the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I don't see any hands. Do you see anything, Melanie?
I do not see any more hands.
Okay, then I will close public comment. Any last minute comments from commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, a motion for this Commissioner Wiering.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just standing up to make the motion if you're ready for that.
Okay, if there are no more comments from the commissioners, Commissioner Wiering, please go ahead.
I want to thank Peter Druckmeyer and John McManus for bringing this issue to our attention and asking for our input. And I want to thank Tom Matush for your advocacy on this important regional issue. I move that we accept the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let, any other discussions? If not, roll call, please, Melanie.
Commissioner Matush.
Aye.
Commissioner Zemke.
Aye.
Commissioner Larenas. Commissioner Larenas.
On mute, aye.
Commissioner Chen Corrali.
Aye.
Commissioner Wiering.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Wiering.
Aye.
So this motion carries unanimously. So Peter and John, congratulations and thank you so much for being here. And let us know what we can do further to help support your effort.
Thank you very, very much and we'll definitely keep you in the loop.
Thank you. So then we will move on to the first, the second agenda item, which is the COVID-19 one-time bonus for essential workers. Jim and Julie.
I'll start off, President Corrali then pass it to Julie, if she's still on. Looks like we lost her. She's having internet connection problems, but.
I, I see Julie.
Okay, good. But then we're proposing or providing to the harbor board an opportunity to review and consider a $2,000 one-time bonus for essential workers who have performed a sectional service to the district and the people of San Mateo County during the COVID-19 pandemic. You'll recall that near the beginning of the pandemic, the board approved bonus in recognition of the exceptional service of the essential workers in keeping the harbor going and open and safe for the public and really standing up the COVID atmosphere where it was safe to do our business. Throughout the summer and then following winter, they've continued to excel in doing their job and keeping the harbor safe, allowing the commercial fishing industry at Half Moon Bay to continue. And also for our tenants, either the restaurants or other tenants at Pillar Point to flourish. And the same thing for Oyster Point, keeping Oyster Point safe and keeping the boat launch and the fishing pier open for the public so they can go out and enjoy the maritime environment. Do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add. This is one of the things that President Chen Corrali requested us to put on the board meeting last agenda for future agenda items.
So I'll open it up to Commissioner comments if there are any.
I'm supportive of this. I would go ahead and step forward with the motion to support this.
Is there a second? I'll second that, just to open it up for discussion. Commissioner Zemke, looks like you might have something to say.
I, I guess my only thought is, is we are as an organization required to be fiscally responsible for for our budget. And, you know, I know, I don't know what we did last year, but I guess I just have some reservations about handing out money when the situation for our our workers may not be totally equivalent to the situation for like a grocery store worker. They're working outdoors. True that they are required to interact with the public on occasion, but I'm not sure there's a direct correlation all the time. So I don't know, I just want to throw that out. I know it's not a huge amount of money in the realm of things, but just the thought crossed my mind, are we, are we totally equivalent to other essential workers? So I'm just going to throw that out.
Okay, Jim, do you want to answer that question in terms of exposure and, you know, going beyond what, what the duties have been over the last year? And what have actually been done, what's actually been done?
Yes, I can do that. The, the work at the harbors is, and the public is, I think, is not necessarily equivalent to an indoor grocery store aisle, but it does require close contact with people from all over the region and all over the state who've come to visit the coast side and to visit the marina. Thousands and thousands of people have lined the harbor and the docks over the last year during COVID and they've had to interact very closely in maintaining the safety, security and the operational status of each one of the harbors. There, our employees are also required to keep everything sanitary. And while we've hired a company to come in and assist in that role, that they only do 50% of the work. Our employees are still engaged in cleaning enclosed spaces such as restrooms and coming in very close contact with the public, including when we have a few search, we had a few search and rescue calls and also the several assist calls in which we have to go out and assist mariners and safely get them back inside the harbor. So I would, and I would say that we do closely interact with the harbors or with the public. And sometimes the public has been, has been very gracious of our efforts. Sometimes they're not. And the wearing of masks by the public has sometimes not been the best. But our staff has been very, very diligent and trying to ensure the safety of everybody who comes to visit our harbors, from the tourists to the people buying stuff at the restaurant or off the boats. They've been extremely professional, making sure everything is safe and moves smoothly out there. So I would say that they much higher risk than the administrative staff who's been able to work from home or other professions where they don't have to physically be in the public eye or public atmosphere.
Okay, thanks, Jim. I appreciate the clarification.
And a little bit of, and just a history on the, on the finances, if I could, President Corrali. When we first brought this to the board last year, the amount of bonus was considered, it was significantly less than other public agencies in San Mateo County that were providing their essential workers. But based on our budget and how we were processing, the, the board decided on a $2,000 limit. At that time, Vice President Corrali, in her vote, said that she would like to revisit this bonus issue once we are able to look at the mid-year report on the budget, which we did last meeting. And so we brought it back to the board for consideration at this time.
And let me just clarify that a little bit, Commissioner Zemke. So this became before us, I think, around the August, September timeframe of last year. And, um, you know, we obviously went into closed session about this, so I can't talk that much about it. But I do know that when it was discussed in open session, Commissioner Brennan at the time brought up that we should double the 2,000, the initial $2,000 amount, even though the $2,000 amount was first put on there at that time. And I was not prepared to look at the additional $2,000 until we looked at our financials. And we did do that. Commissioner Matush and I did that in the Finance Committee meeting that we had this, this month, I think, what is it, like a week or so ago? And so that is why, well, it looked, and everything looked okay for me to even just take a look and discuss this amongst the board, the commissioners, and that's why it's on the agenda today. But just to, so, I mean, I don't know if you were listening in on that meeting, but that's the historical context of why this $2,000, this amount is coming in today. The other $2,000 was approved in 2020.
Okay, that helps. Thanks, thanks for the.
Commissioner Matush, I saw your hand up first and then Commissioner Larenas afterwards, unless John Warren. Oh, John, did you put your hand down? Did you want to add any context, John?
Yes, I would just say that, you know, definitely respectful of, of commissioners, of course, do due diligence to be fiscally responsible. And as Commissioner President Chen Corrali just voiced, I think the commissioners have been very fiscally responsible in initially really granting half basically of, of what the county did for their essential workers. And I would say that while our staff don't, don't work indoors, they are subject much, much like grocery store aisles to very narrow dockways and fishing piers with literally hundreds of people on them sometimes. And all throughout the pandemic, when our staff and nobody really knew how bad it was going to get or how dangerous it was, it was going to be, our staff came to work every day, our essential workers did, and interacted with literally thousands of people, keeping them socially distanced and wearing masks. And regretfully, I will say that two of our staff did in fact come down with, with COVID. Now, that is obviously a 200% higher case than, you know, the, the admin staff or non-essential district employees. I'm, I have to say that I'm, I'm in support of this additional $2,000, which does bring it more in line with what the county essential workers did receive. Thank you.
Commissioner Matush.
I was going to reiterate, and I'll just go a little deeper with what the general manager talked about with the thousands of visitors. You go down to Safeway in Half Moon Bay, they have a little clicker and it's people in, people out, and they limit the loads. The loads of the weekends due to the pandemic and people not working, the visitors down there well exceed thousands on a daily basis. The contact is absolutely and utterly amazing. Sometimes it's hard to walk to the end of the pier. There's so many people that are just getting out, getting out of their house, looking. Perhaps there's fish or crab to buy, but the number of people I've been exposed to is just unbelievable. It's, there's so many. The other thing is, there's so many different programs with COVID cares, PPP, all these different things. I'm sure that we'll put some time into seeing if this is going to be covered by some of our COVID funding. And I don't think we have to look at that right this moment, but I'm sure that there will be ways that this can be addressed and mitigated.
Commissioner Larenas.
Thank you. I'm in complete agreement with all of you folks. I'm down at the harbor quite a bit, spend a lot of time down there and and I see the guys working very hard, especially in the early days. The question of what the impact was going to be on anyone working in this is still unknown. And as Commissioner Matush just stated, the number of people that come to the harbor is very, very large. And I would say that I, I know that our staff can't say this, but I can. And that is that with respect to other folks that work with the public, I think, in fact, I believe that our staff interactions are much higher than most. If you're down at the harbor on a weekend, you'll, you'll see that the, the number of people in the harbor far exceeds what you see in a grocery store. And I think the real question really isn't so much the level of exposure anyway. It's the commitment that our staff has shown to working with the public and, and keeping themselves safe and keeping the public safe. And as most of you know, if you work with the public, there is the good, the bad and the ugly, and our guys are exposed to all of it. And I've seen it and they're very professional and it's, I very much appreciate it. So I think this is the least we can do for them.
Um, Commissioner Wiering? You're on, you're on mute.
There we go. Double click. Yes, I, it's good to hear everybody's comments. I, I do appreciate Bill's concerns and the way he raised them. And it was important for me to hear our general manager's input, more specifically on how our harbor personnel are impacted during this last year. So, yeah, I'll be in support of this. Thank you.
I have a quick question for John or Jim. So I know that when COVID, the outbreak, the pandemic first started and, you know, things were uncertain, as Commissioner Larenas said, and, you know, we were doing everything as best as we could, trial by fire. I know that we had actual, we had actually painted distance markers, you know, on the pier so that people could socially distance. And I know that since this is an outdoor pier, we weren't subject to occupancy requirements, were we, John or Jim? I mean, because it didn't seem like it every time I went out there and I didn't go out that much, but the couple of times I was out there, you know, there were, it was filled and I'm glad people are using it, but can you just address whether or not we had, you know, capacity limits?
We did not have capacity limits set on us by the county or the state or the health officer. We were required to, you know, the face covering mandate and then the social distancing. But one thing that, the social distancing doesn't take into account like in grocery stores at the harbor, it, it was family units that came to visit. And so we had groups of six or 10 people all standing on a line that was six feet away from another group of 10 or 12 people. And that was for restaurants and that was for the stores, that was for off-the-boat fish sales. So it was very, very crowded. But our, our staff was very, very professional, working with the tenants, working with the public and reminding them to wear their masks and to maintain social distancing when possible.
One other comment for Commissioner Zemke as well, you probably read this, but when, and for the public as well, is that this is a one-time bonus, so this is not personable and therefore it will not affect our future unfunded liability situation, which is something that I, the board made sure was the case in the first, the first $2,000 one-time bonus that was given.
Thanks.
Any other comments from commissioners? I'll open this up to public comment. I don't see any hands, but Melanie, had you, did you get any emails or anything?
No, I don't see anything.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second to approve this based on staff recommendation as well. If there are no comments from the commissioners and no public comments, let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Zemke.
Aye.
Commissioner Larenas.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen Corrali.
Aye.
Commissioner Wiering.
Aye.
Commissioner Matush.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you. Can you please, Jim and John, just tell everyone that we're very appreciative of their work and, you know, as we continue to recover, we know that there's going to also continue to be more demands on them. So please thank everyone for us.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you. So item number 10, which is the Finance Committee update. This is to approve the Finance Committee's recommended scope and duties. And since I'm the chair of the Finance Committee, I'll just give this quick report. The Finance Committee, which is comprised of Commissioner Matush and myself, met last week and basically just are recommending that we move forward with approving the scope and duties of the Finance Committee, which is basically the same one that was approved a few years ago and, you know, based on the, based on the situation today. we just didn't think there were need to be any, there needed to be any changes and that the scope was completely um, completely relevant and appropriate. And that scope is to develop and communicate district financial plan while protecting and managing district income and assets. And the duties are budgeting and financial planning, reporting, internal controls and accountability policies, audit and investments, and there are little bullets under there. So um we're recommending that the board approve the Finance Committee's scope and duties. So is there a motion to um approve this before, so we can kick off the discussion?
Don't move.
I'll second that.
Okay, and is there any discussion by the commissioners? Commissioner Lourainis? I don't know, you look like you're about to say something.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Just thank you for your work on this committee, you too.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Matush, do you have anything to add to this? Because you've been a big part of this committee for a long time.
I would just look forward to uh, we've got so many positive and beneficial things from our staff and such a well-working machine right now. Um, they take a lot of the effort away from us, and we're just glad to be able to be the little watchdogs around their ankles.
And I'm going to echo Commissioner Matush's sentiment. Do you know, Julie, kudos to you. You have done an amazing job in keeping our budget in line and, you know, really um fulfilling our mission of, you know, making sure that our marinas and our harbor district are in great financial health. So please thank your staff and, you know, everyone who's been involved with this. This has come a long, long way. The budget has come a long way since I first got on this board in 2015, 2016. So um, thank you, thank you for all of that. So.
Thank you. Yes, I'll pass that along.
Okay, do you have any comments, Julie? You sound like you're okay with this scope and duties too.
No, it's uh, it's been a good year. Um, and I'll go through the budget on the next items.
Okay.
I'll save my comments to them.
Thank you. Um, I'll open this up to public comment. I don't see any hands, but Melanie, just to make sure, did you get any emails?
Uh, nope, it looks like we're good.
Okay, last call for commissioner comments. Not, let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Lourainis?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen Corrali?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryering?
Aye.
Commissioner Matush?
Aye.
Commissioner Zimki?
Aye.
That, that motion carries, and then we are going to go to the next item, which is the first look of the fiscal year 2021, '22 operating budget and capital improvement. This also came before the Finance Committee. Um, and thanks to the hard work of Julie and her staff, I think it looks really good. But this is the first look per our process. So Julie?
Yes, um, Jim just let me know that there's a lot of feedback, so I hope everyone can hear me okay.
Yeah, there's feedback, but we can hear you.
Okay, so hopefully my internet will stay connected. Um, I'm going to share my screen. And so here is the um cover page of our 21, '22 fiscal year operating budget and five-year capital improvement program. This budget document was a lot of hard work by, you know, uh, all of the administrative staff and uh operations staff to be able to present this to you. This uh cover was um put together by Lizzie. I think it's a beautiful picture. And here's the um table of contents. Basically, there's four parts of the budget, including an introduction, the operating budget, a five-year capital improvement program, and then policies and definitions. This is the very first year that we've received this distinguished budget presentation award by the Government Finance Officers Association. This far was for our last year's budget. During the review process by GFOA, they made some recommendations on how we can further improve our budget. And they also provided additional requirements for the current budget that's being presented, which we're working on incorporating those requirements so that we will be eligible for award uh for this budget document also. And so as I go through this budget document, there are yellow highlighted um sections of what the reviewers were recommending. And also um, GFOA added a lot of uh requirements for performance indicators, goals, and objectives. And we're working together as a team to put those together. And that's by departmental um detail. The first change between last year's budget and this year's budget is that we're looking at an executive summary. So what we've done is we've incorporated the budget summary into the executive summary and added a little bit more detail there. We're going to be working on um having some more charts as part of this uh by executive summary. And this is a letter that will be presented to you um by Jim Pruitt, our general manager. Uh-oh. So I'm now having technical difficulties. Um, Jim, would you be able to share your screen and then I can talk about the budget?
I can do that.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, I'll stop sharing here because it's not loading. Okay, so if you go to um this is the introduction. Uh, we talked about that in the executive summary. Go to the next page. This is the budget process. We've added a budget calendar that was a requirement by GFOA. I'll be working with the Finance Committee to get specific dates for when they will uh meet so that we can fill in this yellow highlighted area. This is an opportunity for the general public to um present to the commissioners any recommendations or ideas that they may have on this budget document. Okay, next page. Some of the um issues. Uh, so the priorities and performance goals. Uh, we added what the Harbor Commission approved at the February meeting. You want to go to the next page, Jim? This is all the uh goals and objectives uh at the February special meeting that Jim presented to the board. We've incorporated those into the budget document. Uh, we're going to do some more work on this to visually tie the um the eight goals that from our strategic plan are being tied to all the 20, '21 goals and in objectives in support of those goals. So uh for the preliminary budget, the Finance Committee will see a little updated version of this. I won't go through all these goals and objectives at this time since we, we went through them at the February meeting. If you want to go to the next section, Jim? About Us, we're going to be adding more information in the About Us section that will include San Mateo County-specific statistics and information, demographics, um, and uh biggest uh major industries, homelessness and housing. And then this is the 21, '22 operating budget. This is where we get into the numbers. Uh, we just discovered on Wednesday, this last Wednesday, that our insurance, property insurance and liability insurance is going to be going up 20% for next year. And uh that's because there's been excess losses by SDRMA. So these numbers are going to change slightly when you look at the preliminary budget. Right now, we know one of those changes, there's going to be an additional extra $40,000 in expenses. Uh, if you go down through the summary, you can see that the opera, oh, not, not you, Jim, sorry. Um, the operating revenues are expected to go up 4.47%. And that's primarily due to an anticipated increase in fees and rents. Last fiscal year, the board approved a approved not increasing the fees as required by our policy. We usually increase our fees by the CPI or the inflationary increase. Last year, that was 3.3%. We made a determination that we would table that 3.3% and add it to this year's inflation, thinking that there might even be a negative inflationary rate. And this year, um, the percentage, there was actually inflation of 1.7%. So a total combined of 5%. And that rate and fee schedule will be presented to the Harbor Commissioners at a future board meeting for review and consideration of approval. That 4.47% is slightly offset by um the large development project that that's causing some decreases in the Oyster Point Marina birth and slip rental line items. The next line item is the non-operating revenues. Those are budgeted to decrease by 2.8%. Basically, the district received this year $531,000 in prior year excess ERAF distributions. And those were related for the years starting in 2008, 2017, 18. Um, the county was holding on to some money while they were talk, in talks with the state of California. And they were going to either release that money that was set aside to the district or back to the state, depending on how those talks um turned out. And they turned out in our favor, so they distributed that $531,000 that was related to last uh prior year's excess ERAF contributions. We're not expected to get as much excess ERAF. We will still continue to be getting excess ERAF in future years, but the calculation has now changed. The reason for that is that they were um calculating um charter schools in the process of the excess ERAF. And it was discovered that they shouldn't include those charter schools in this calculation. The salaries, wages, and benefit expenditures are projected to increase by 6.07% due to an estimated 5% salary, wage, and benefit cost increase along with the anticipation of being fully staffed in 21, '22. The non-personnel expenditures are budgeted to decrease by 1.96% due to anticipated decrease in legal fees, utilities, and operating expenses. And in 21, 2021, expenditures were higher than normal due to legal costs for successful defense of the district in arbitration and the increased operating costs related to safety initiatives associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. The 2021 projection includes $646,000 in election costs, which uh we will not expect to have that next year either. So in total, uh, for the 21, '22 budget, we uh will have, revenues will exceed our expenditures by approximately $3.1 million. That's compared to what we're projecting at the end of 2021, which is $2.8 million. If you want to go now to um the short-term factors influencing decisions. Some of the things that might influence um our decision-making process on how to put together this budget include um what's going to happen with our economy in the future. Is there going to be a continued um decrease related to COVID-19 pandemic? I know the economists are saying that we're going, our GDP is expected to grow. Um, there's concerns about inflation. Uh, we don't know uh what the impact will be on things like commercial property. As people transition to remote work, there's a lot of unknowns um that could impact um the district in the short term. The other thing is that a lot of um the long-term liability for unfunded CalPERS retirement plan. Uh, they have, make certain assumptions that we're going to get certain rates of return on our money. Those could be at risk because of um the market values. They've been doing great so far, but um there is a possibility that they could take a downturn. The district has two month-to-month leases, which were in the negotiation process of those leases to try to get them a little bit more long-term. That is $150,000 combined amount annually. And um the state and federal governments might have impacts on our budget. There is a potential that one of that, part of that $1.9 trillion that was uh just passed could trickle down to the district. On the flip side of that, there might not be as much money available for grant funding for infrastructure projects. If you want to go down to uh page number 17 now, Jim? I think it's 17. No. Are you going up? Sorry. Um. Page 34, I believe. We'll talk a little bit about our long-term outlook. Okay, the next page. Okay, so here's our, our five-year forecast. Um, the top section of this table shows what we're forecasting for all our capital improvement projects. The working capital uh assumes the operating revenues will not increase for the next five years. And the non-operating revenues will actually decrease by uh 1% each year. We could do much better than that. There, there might not be a negative impact, but that's a conservative approach for our five-year forecast at this point in time. So over a five-year period, the revenues will exceed the expenditures by approximately $7 million, which would be available for funding of our infrastructure projects. We also have um infrastructure projects that have postponed our funding as we look for grant opportunities. Now that we're showing a positive trend and revenues exceeding expenditures, we may even consider getting financing for some of our projects. But right now, we're, we're doing pretty well. We have a little over $17 million that is projected at the end on June 30th of 2021 to fund our capital projects. And we're not expected to overspend our revenues over the next five years as we were looking at last time we presented this budget. Last time, the reasons that there's differences here as property taxes increased more that we, more than we had anticipated. And we had thought that the health benefit insurance costs would go up by approximately 25%. That did not happen. What happened through COVID is that they actually, the costs actually decreased because people stopped going to the doctors. And so that, and also we paid $2.3 million for our unfunded retirement liability a couple of years ago, and that's decreasing our benefit costs by about $120,000 a year. So those three things are the biggest changes in this five-year forecast. If you want to go down, Jim, do you want to go through the capital projects? Or would you like me to do that?
I just want to highlight on this five-year forecast. For fiscal year 2022, we're looking at, based on the approved capital improvement plan from last year, investing $5,900,000 into Pillar Point, $293,000 into Oyster Point, and then the administration. For the following year, 2023, with the capital improvement plan, we're looking at flipping that to 260 at Pillar Point Harbor and 6,125 at Oyster Point Marina. And those will complete several projects, both at Pillar Point Harbor and then the main dock replacements of 12, 13 and 14 at Oyster Point Marina. The proposed budget, this first look budget that we prepared is the same, has the same priorities as last year. We haven't changed those priorities. We did add the, based on board direction, we added the administration building to it following the public space, following the approval of the budget. So those, that program is still an ongoing program and we're working through that. So those projects, one through 11, you see on your screen, are approved projects and funded projects that we're recommending in this budget for board approval to continue. The other capital improvement projects are approved by the board. With one exception, and we're asking the board to accept that this year, is the access ramps for docks one through six at Oyster Point Marina. They will need to be addressed once the city of South San Francisco addresses the inundation and subsidence issues at those dock landings and docks one through six. The district will have to come in and put new dock landings on that new elevation and reconnect those to our docks. And because of the project, we'll also have to bring each one of those docks into ADA compliance. And that's an estimated project of 1.2 million. We're adding to the approval, recommending to board that they approve the project, but we're still looking for funding on that, and that's why it's still in that category. And then the budget goes through each one of our plans. The catch Joe and restroom, again, we expect to have that completed by the very first couple of months of the 2022, but majority by this year. The RV restroom in ADA parking at Surfers Beach, we're moving forward with that. We expect to issue the construction contract before the end of the year and start construction. The survey of docks one through six, we're hoping to integrate that in with our master plan. So we may be able to save $100,000 on this project. We're, we're trying to integrate that now, but right now it's approved by the board and funded. We're asking for that to be continued. If I can't integrate it. Docks 12, 13 and 14 I just discussed. The, the Surfers Beach Restoration Project is moving forward. We're in the middle of our process for the eelgrass mitigation plan inside the harbor. That's going very, very well. And we'll be coming up with a plan probably next couple of months, which we can finalize, get permitting for. And we hope to start the eelgrass mitigation, which is a precursor to the dredging in the spring of 2022. The West Trail Project, we hope to put that out to contract very, very soon. It is ready and, or hopefully need to get the bids back for construction in April of this year. So the budgeted is approved by the board again is listed out there. The enterprise resource approved by the board and funded is moving forward also. And we continue to work with the contractor in developing that program. Vessel replacements for this year, we're not recommending any vessel or vehicle replacements. We did a couple of purchases in the last few years that brought us current and will continue with our regular maintenance, but other than that, we're not recommending for any purchases. The master plan, we signed a contract with a consultant based on the board's direction, and we're moving forward with that. So we'll be expending those funds as approved by the board for the master plan. The construction of the admin building also approved by the board, both as a project and as for funding, is still moving forward. And we've received multiple responses to the RFP, and we're reviewing those now. And we'll be moving forward with that project, but we don't expect to spend any money on that project in this fiscal year. The aids marking the channel into Oyster Point, as the board knows, was destroyed due to wear and tear and weather and just rot and have to be replaced. And that is currently underway, and the contractor's been hired to design those. And we hope to complete those this year. And the board again approved this project last year with the funding. We're asking it to be continued. And then these are the projects again that are approved by the board, but we're asking the board to continue approval, but funding still needs to be identified before we take any further action on them. This is that new project of access ramps for docks one through six at Oyster Point Marina. And if anybody has, then the budget goes through each one of those projects. And we'll see what's coming up after this. And then they again goes through the different estimated encumbrances on those capital improvement projects, and we'll be updating all those numbers to make sure they're correct for the preliminary budget that we bring back after this meeting. And I'll return it back to Julie. Pending any questions.
Is this the time you'd like questions or comments, Jim and Julie? From the commissioners? Because if it is, I'm happy to open up the discussion. Or Julie, do you need anything else that you want to give us?
No, that, that concludes the presentation. As Jim said, happy to answer any questions, take any feedback.
Okay, I'll open it up to Commissioner Discussion. Commissioner Zimki, I don't know if you have anything to say. You're not muted. That's what I'm asking you.
Very, very thorough, very easy to understand presentation, and I appreciate it.
Commissioner Lourainis.
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Wiering.
Yeah, I just want to thank Julie and staff for this work and the finance committee. This is a very hopeful and optimistic first look. We've come a long way since I joined the board. I'm just so excited about everything we have coming down the pipe.
Thank you, Commissioner Matush.
Finance Committee met with Julie and we provided plenty of feedback, involvement incorporated. This consistently gets improved, and I look forward to our next GFOA, or however you say that, approval again.
And I agree, and thank you, Julie and your staff, Boomer, everybody. Just please let them know how appreciative we are. I think the budget, like I said, has come a long way since, over the last few years. So you probably just need us to receive the presentation, right? And then we'll just move on with the calendar for another update that's going to come up. Is that, is that all you need at this point?
Yes, at the next meeting, we'll ask the board to adopt the preliminary budget. And then we'll notice that to the general public that that's been published and is ready for comment.
Okay, I'll open it up, this discussion item up for public comment or to public comment. I don't see any hands raised. Do you have any emails, Melanie?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, then I'll close public comment, and there's really nothing to vote on. So we'll just move forward with the next item, and we'll look also, we'll also look forward to your next update, Julie. So the next item is Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Zimki.
Oh, yes, I would like to make comment just to thank the staff for a tour of Oyster Point Marina, which was, I think, very well attended, had a good opportunity for kind of informal discussions and the chance to meet Commissioner Matush, Matush face to face, which was, which was good. Since that time, I know I've had some, I did have an informal meeting on another subject with Mike Futrell from the city manager from South San Francisco. And I did kind of chat a little bit about Oyster Point and the things going on out there. And he agreed that it probably would be, just because there's a lot going on out there, would probably be a good time for the liaison committee to get together. The liaison committee, the two representatives from South San Francisco are both new on the city council here in South City. James Coleman and Eddie Flores. And I think it would, and I'm also new on the commission as well. So I think it would be advantageous to have a little more in-depth discussion in view of all the work that's going on out of Oyster Point. And I think wheels are already in motion to try and set that liaison committee up, so. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Matush.
I was fortunate enough to participate with President Corrali about in Fisherman's COVID shot. Thing that was very rewarding to see all the fishermen lining up. And then all of a sudden, the people who are hoping to get additional shots, the whole thing was, could not have been run better. Everything was excellent. As already stated, salmon fishing looks like doom and gloom for commercial and pretty much for recreational. Rock fishing is about our only salvation right now for something to do in the ocean. However, we always have this problem in the spring. The water's too cold and the fish don't want to eat, so sometimes it's difficult. But things are on the right track, and I'm glad to hear that we got into the orange tier. And hopefully that brings more business to our tenants.
Thank you, Commissioner Lourainis.
Yes, a couple of things to report. Surf Rider Foundation every year has a, a lobbying week with Washington DC representatives, our representatives in Congress. I participated in two days of meetings. The emphasis was on climate change, clean water, public health, and replacing or reducing plastic pollution. So we were lobbying our representatives for, for legislation, specific legislation on these issues. And I represented San Mateo County. Once again, I'd just like to say that I'd like to see our, our regular meetings changed to evening hours so the public can attend. And I would like to have more notice on, I realize that, that we notice our meetings with respect to the Brown Act, so we're in compliance, but a one-day notice ahead of a meeting is, makes it impossible for most of the public to attend. And it makes me, puts me in a difficult position if my calendar is full, which it often is. So I'm specifically referring to the meeting we had at South San Francisco. I couldn't attend because I had other issues, other meetings that I had to attend. So I would appreciate just having a more of a notice instead of one day. So I'd like you guys to have thought about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Wiering.
I have, I have nothing special to say today. Good meeting.
Thank you. I just have a quick comment. I want to thank the staff as well. I was at this special meeting of the Oyster Point site visit, and I thought it was really a great meeting. So Jim, please thank Jim Merlow and all of the other Harbor Patrol staff members for their, you know, work and, you know, just being patient enough to take us around and give us a tour. Commissioner Zimki is correct. We had a great turnout. I mean, surprisingly, a big turnout. And I'm very happy that there's interest in that. And as Commissioner Matush said, we were, he and I were both at the mobile clinic vaccine to vaccinate the essential workers of our commercial fishing fleet, which is basically the commercial fishing fishermen and fisherwomen. And I think there were like over 40 people who were there. It was a tightly controlled environment. The, the county and the Half Moon Bay Seafood Marketing Association worked together to help get the mobile vaccine clinic list put together. And then we were involved in terms of providing the venue and to make sure that everyone was safe. So Jim, please give our thanks to Chris Tibby and to, I think Dante and Carrie Smith were also there. We had an incident with, with one of the fishermen. And so the firefighters from Coastside Fire had to come out just to make sure everything was okay. So everything worked really smoothly. The only feedback that I got was from Coastside Fire. I think that they would have wanted to, you know, have some notice just so that they were prepared. I mean, no big deal because their station, you know, was close by, but still I think that they would have liked some notice. So, you know, just something to keep in mind if we do another, another mobile clinic like this. But all in all, I thought it was great. I think the fisher, the fishing fleet and the community there were very, very appreciative that this happened. And I, and you know, and I think the county Department of Agriculture waits and measures and the Half Moon Bay Seafood Marketing Association for really organizing all of this. And in particular, Nancy Post and Lisa Damrosch. So that's pretty much all that I have in terms of Commissioner Comments. So we can, I don't see anything for future agenda items.
Commissioner Corrali, I think we have an Allison M. from the
Oh, okay, hold on. Yeah, thank you so much, Melanie. Hold on. Oh, for public comments. So I'm not sure if Allison M. would like to make a comment about the item that we just got off of, which is Commissioner Comments, but I will open it up for that item. Allison.
Hi, yes, yes, it is a comment that I'd like to make about Commissioner Comments. And I just want to say, I attend quite a few public meetings, and the city of Redwood City is seven o'clock on a Monday, and it's very difficult for people to get to. Every Wednesday night, I have a Green New Deal meeting, and I know that I really appreciate this meeting being during the day. The BCDC meets at noon, the State Lands Commission meets at 1:00, the County Board of Supervisors meets at 9:00 AM. And so the public, absolutely, I think it's easier to attend during the day. And the other thing I'd like to say about the special meeting, I was on my, my e-bike in Berkeley, and I put my bike on the bark and rode along the Bay Trail. And a member, as a member of the public with short notice, and I made it to the tour of Oyster Point Marina. So I do think the public has more access with the meetings at this time. And I think it's more convenient for the staff, too. And all of the people that contribute, like the people that spoke earlier on, you know, the salmon and the ecosystem. So I think it's better for everybody, and I think it's more in alignment with similarly situated boards, county boards, coastal commission, BCDC, State Lands Commission. So I would advocate that the public has more access during the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. So we can move on to the activity reports. If you just want to give an overview, Jim? John and Julie, I mean, I think the meeting pretty much covered a lot of what's happened over the last month. But if there's anything you'd like to add, this is the time to do so.
I don't have anything to add to the, to the committee or my report as written. But I do want to, I want to highlight that the county did publish their beach testing results for last week and are following the rainy event. And it's substantial when you look at the beaches that exceed the limits for water quality. After a rain event, we get all our beaches listed. As opposed to when we have a dry spell, we may get one or no beaches listed. So showing where that contamination is coming from. So I just wanted to highlight that as to the board, and I can send that report out if interested.
Thank you. Any comments about that addition to Jim's or the addition that Jim just reported on? Okay, John Moran, any additions that you'd like to make?
I would just like to touch on real quick. Jim hit on a little bit, but we are very excited that the advertisements for the invitation for bid for actual construction after seven years has finally gone out now for the construction at West Trail. Widening and protecting the West Trail with the, I guess, relatively new idea about the, that we're going to end up going with, which is a rather growthally new concept to the East Coast, West Coast anyway, where, and the East Coast as well, to all of the United States, really. Where we're going to actually be protecting the shoreline in a very natural way, no hard armoring. And I thank the commissioners for for driving us in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Julie, you had an exhaustive agenda item, so I don't know if you have anything to add from an administration standpoint. If not, no big deal, because you've done so much work. Nothing? You're on mute.
No, not, nothing that I haven't already covered in the budget. The big project that administrates the staff, it will be undertaking is the ERP project. That's not emergency resource plan. It's Enterprise Resource Planning System. And so that acronym, we throw around for two different, very different things. And we're going to be, you know, extremely busy. Hopefully, in the next coming up month, Boomer and I have had now three meetings with Tyler Technologies, who will help us through this process, and we're excited to get that going and be in full swing here sometime soon.
Thank you, Julie. Any comments about Julie's comments and additional comment? Okay, it is now 2:55, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I was going to say, this was a fun meeting. No one wants to leave, but thank you for the motion and a second. Roll call, please, Melanie.
Commissioner Chan Corrali?
Hi.
Commissioner Ryering? Commissioner Ryering?
Nancy.
Commissioner Matush?
Happy St. Patrick's Day, and I.
Commissioner Zimki?
I.
Commissioner Lourainis?
I.
Thank you very much, and thanks to all who attended the meeting today and gave public comment. Thank you, thank you. We're adjourned at 2:56. Thank you.